I'm going to call to order the county council meeting on January fourteenth. The first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in all manner and under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Alder Radifrata, Alder Barr, Alder Clouter, Alder Crowsey, Alder Rice, Mayor Richardson, Alder Schroeder, Alder Scott, Alder Strossman, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Then, public appearances, non-genetic items, new appointments is next. The first thing is I want to make sure to let you guys know that I'm creating a mayoral ad hoc committee for the 2020 census. It's called the Complete Count Committee, and we have a number of people on the list here. It's really trying to ensure that we have everyone in Pittsburgh that's counted. It's really important for lots of different reasons, and I really thought that Dorothy would be a great choice, both as representing District One, but also the county board, and she graciously agreed to be the representative from council. We have our neighborhood navigators on there, someone from Senior Center, a couple of residents, a couple of staff members as well. So, I want to let you know that this is something that's happening. I don't think it needs approval at all, but it's something that we are working on and want to make sure that as we do the census this year, that everyone's accounted, everyone's counted, especially those populations that maybe wouldn't get counted traditionally. So, we're doing that. And then, the next one is, we had an opening on transportation and transit, and Bill Horns, or William Horns, has agreed to fill in that spot. If you want to come up, Bill, maybe just introduce yourself, a lot of people know you already. One of the things that I think is great, and having Bill involved, is that he's heavily involved also at the Senior Center, and that's a population that has a lot of transportation needs as well, so if you want to just give us a...
You just made my introductory speech. Now, I'm happy to be on this committee. Jim McCone, the director of the Senior Center, is very concerned about transportation issues for seniors and getting people from our widely dispersed city into the Senior Center and serving their transportation needs. So, this was an opportunity that Dorothy called our attention to, and I said, "Well, I'll throw my name in the hat," so...
All right, well, thank you for doing that.
Yep.
All right, any questions at all for Bill? All right, see, none. Someone want to make a motion to approve? All right, same by hand, all in favor of approving Bill, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
All right, next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I would, I would like to ask if we can move something on the agenda?
Uh, yeah. Yep, I think there's a couple of things actually, so, we can do that now.
Could we move eight A five up a little earlier so that those folks don't have to stay for the whole meeting?
Yep, yeah. And I'd also like to move up eight C one, which is the golf course as well. Oh, I'm not sure where exactly on the agenda, but in the earlier part here, so those people don't have to... Eight C one is the golf course, since Dan is here as well. Um, yeah, probably right away after the consent agenda. So, I'll move those two things up, since we have people here for those two items, and I think everything else is pretty far up, close up in the agenda that people are here for. Julia?
Can I add a quick referral to commission? Can I add a commission to one of them?
Yeah, so, let's do a motion first, and then I will...
Okay.
You can add that, maybe. So, first we'll do a motion to approve, someone could do that, for the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, all right, second. Then, Julia, you want to...
Yes, I would like in the referral, item fourteen, I'm fifteen, if you can go to C two.
Oh, sure, yep. So, it's the Airbnb thing, yep. So, if we could add C two to that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. If we do a friendly, yeah. Yep. Dorothy?
And I'd like to separate out five B two.
So, the...
Five what?
Top of page two.
Okay, so, we'll approve that separately, so, remove it right now from the consent agenda. That's the solar farm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so, we'll do that separately. Anything else people want to pull out separately at all? All right, see, none. Then, all in favor of approving consent agenda, removing two for now, so, everything but two, and then adding C two to those two, can say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, and then, we have this B two then, the, I don't know, I guess someone first needs to make a motion, and then we can figure out.
I'll move approval.
All right.
Second.
All right, so, Dan, see, how, Dorothy, what's your...
And, the only thing that I really wanted to say about this, this is one of the times and the issues where I would have liked in the comp plan to be able to have more opportunity to discuss the urban service area. This was part of the area that I had suggested in talking about the Edgewood proposal, that we also consider finding ways to do some residential development across Lacy Road from the schools. This is effectively eliminating the possibility, it's a fifty-year contract, so we're not going to be able to talk about residential development south, on the south side of Lacy Road, in the indeterminate future, and that kind of hurts my heart.
All right, any other comments? All right, see, none. Then, all in favor of approving the referral of that, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, and that is also referred out. Moving right along, let's jump to the two that we moved up first, before we go to the new business here. So, the first thing would be eight A five, and that is the Chapel Valley Church. Find this here. All right, great, so, this is a rezon request, so, I don't, Tom, if you want to, this is under Plan Commission, so if you could do a motion on this, that'd be great.
This is in Orleans, twenty twenty dash zero dash oh one, RC twenty-three twenty-three dash nineteen, approving a rezon request, RC twenty-three twenty-three dash nineteen by Suzanne, is it Jeannie?
No.
Je...
Jenin.
Sorry, Suzanne, if I had wrong. Agent for Chapel Valley LLC to rezon request associated with twenty-seven seventy Chapel Valley Road. The lot is three seventy-two, fourth addition to Highlands of Seminole, from Business General to Business Professional, and...
And you're moving approval.
I move approval, Plan Commission.
I'll second it.
All right, seconded, and Plan Commission also approved this. Suzie, you want to come up and speak to this?
So, do you just want me to share a little bit?
Yeah, that'd be great.
General.
A little background.
Yeah, so, I represent our church, Chapel Valley Church. My husband and I are the pastors of that church. We ironically used to be located at twenty-nine fifty Chapel Valley, which is literally right across this property. We started this property search about ten years ago, so, closing in ironically to be right across the street, I'm sure there's something deep in there for me to discover to take ten years and end up across the street. So, what we're looking to do is basically purchase the whole building. It will actually then, by us purchasing it, will be occupied, or will be owned by the church, but then it'll also be a multi-use property. So, all existing leases will stay in existing, and we'll work with the tenants to keep it office space, and then second floor to be occupied by our church, and have our church facility up there. And so, that kind of makes the plan what it is. It kind of is nice for us, because so many times we talk about multi-use property, and then no one really knows what to do from that point, and so, we're kind of being given this gift in that it's already in use, and we can both utilize the space for our church, while also keeping the first, you know, first floor as offices. And so, yeah, that's a little bit about what we're looking to do. It was outside of our box of what we were initially planning on doing, even outside of where we ultimately wanted to be located, which was in District One, which we do most, actually, all of our outreach currently in for the last four years, in reaching that Verona Road West area.
You don't have to change your name, though?
We don't have to, you know, someone asked us that initially when we, when my husband and I became the pastors four years ago, and we thought, "Well, there's no need to do that." And so, little did we know, we'd be sitting here with the address of Chapel Valley again, so...
All right, other questions at all, people have? Yeah, Dorothy?
A question that I would have is, churches typically are tax exempt. In a building with mixed use like this, how does that work?
Yeah, so, once you're, once we occupy the building, so, in twenty-twenty-one will be when the property will be to be an all tell, I don't know, there's probably a better term for it, but both being taxable on what portions we are maintaining revenue from, and then the portion that the church will be occupying will be then tax exempt, or any nonprofit in there. So, that's something that we actually navigated through with the tax assessor for the city of Pittsburgh to ensure what was, what could we do, or what needed to be done, so, and then that will be something that's reviewed on a yearly basis, based on the leases we have.
Thank you. I knew many people would have that question.
Yeah.
Julia, do you have a question too?
I was the same, like Dorothy, and, but I would say that I, you know, I met with Suzie, she explained me the project, and it's in my district, and, you know, I'm happy that you're moving back. Welcome.
Thanks.
Other questions at all? See, none. Then, all in favor of approving can say aye.
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 Any opposed name?
Thanks, guys.
All right, that's approved, congrats.
Thank you.
All right, then, next, let's do the golf course. Sarah, do you want to do a motion for this one?
I'd make a motion to approve our two oh seven nineteen, resolution two oh seven nineteen, authorizing the nine, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-nine nine Springs Golf Course Management Contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. And, do you, Pat, want to...
I, I would want to state, though, that there was some amendments to the resolution brought forth by the Finance Committee, and if one of the members of Finance would amend this resolution accordingly, to be in line with what Finance approved, you could just stay that, state that, but you might want to explain what was approved. Otherwise, I can't.
Okay, so, do you want me to do this, Tom, or are you going to do it?
Go for it.
Okay, so, essentially, if you look at the situation with the Golf Course Manager, Dan Larson is here tonight, you have a situation where he has a new contract, we're terminating the old contract and starting with a new one, which is costing additional twenty thousand dollars in this budget cycle, which created a budget gap. And so, to replace that money, there was, there's a couple options that Misty put forth in the resolution. Contingency funds of thirteen thousand, which is not enough to cover the gap, but could have covered a partial gap. That fourth, one-fourth position for the building inspector, which is what Finance ultimately chose to go with, and then also another thirteen thousand dollars that had been appropriated for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. However, the Finance Committee did not touch that money. So, what they chose to go with was, and the mayor had made some comments to Pat and to myself about, in the future, he'd like to revisit that position, that obviously will now be taken out if the council goes in the same direction as the Finance Commission, but we went with that. Also, we added a, part of the amendment to the whereas clause was that we are terminating the previous contract, and then we terminated the be it resolved clauses for the thirteen thousand from Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, and also for the thirteen from the contingency fund. So, we had left it with the one-fourth position, twenty thousand dollars should cover the cost, building inspection.
All right, so, if I'm reading that right, or if I'm hearing right, there are some options on the amendment, and the option that you recommended, and I don't know what Parks recommended, was to remove the quarter position, building inspection position, and that would, and keep money in Healthy Neighborhoods. So, essentially, you're removing the Healthy Neighborhoods amendment, because you're taking the money from the half-quarter building inspection position?
Correct. I would add that there were some questions, because I had mentioned that you had talked about your interest in putting the, a building inspection position in a future budget. Obviously, that'd be a decision, a budget decision by you, should you be re-elected. And so, I explained that to, to the other members of Finance, and maybe you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and I think, you know, something, the building inspection position is something that we're going to need in next, you know, as we continue to grow and take over in Tony Madison, so that's something that I'm willing to have as a priority for next year. Don't know what the budget's going to be, but it can be a priority for next year, for sure. Did you speak at all in Finance or in Parks about the start date? Because I know it says in here February first, I don't know if that's something you want to speak to, Pat?
No, that, that wasn't discussed in Finance, but what we, what we could do is we could make that retroactive to January one of twenty twenty, based on the RFP proposal.
And I know that the goal was to have this acted on in twenty nineteen anyway, and there were some internal issues.
Yeah, there were some, there were some internal issues in the format of the RFP that originally went out, so that was a staff error, and we don't believe the Golf Course Superintendent, I would call him, should be responsible for that error.
Yeah. Julia, you have a question?
Yes, also, I watch the Park Commission, and also, they, they make an amendment to the, to the resolution, so you're going to take that part of Park two, or no? Increasing one thousand dollar per, per year, I don't know, sir.
That's it. So, within Parks, we didn't get into the specific financial recommendation, but we did discover, like, or, as we were talking things through, the seventh whereas, where it breaks down the thousand-dollar increment with the preceding nine years, there was just a lot of confusion, and to request if that could be clarified, that it increases one thousand dollars, just because, as we kind of discussed it as a commission, it just got kind of confusing as to when it started, and so, we just asked if that whereas could be clarified to state, it starts at this amount, and it increases one thousand dollars each year until this date, where we just asked for some clarifying language within that whereas clause.
And that's in the contract, isn't it? It's kind of a default?
It is. It would, it would start at the additional twenty thousand or fifty thousand dollars. It would increase one thousand dollars starting January first of twenty twenty-one.
So, we've talked about making a few edits. We don't really actually have anything that's actually formally been proposed. So, I don't know, maybe, Dan, if you or someone at Finance wants to amend, to strike those clauses you mentioned, and maybe have the start date be January one as well. I don't know if you want to do that, Dan, or someone on Finance?
I'm having to make that motion. The aforementioned information I gave, deleting the aforementioned whereas clauses, thirteen thousand dollars from contingency, the thirteen thousand from Healthy Neighborhoods, leaving the therefore be it resolved clause related to the half, one-fourth position, and changing the start date to January first, two thousand twenty.
Excuse me, and, and terminating the prior contract.
And terminating the prior contract, and, we can throw in Sarah's stuff if you want to.
So, if I may...
First, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. And then, Janelle, yeah?
I think we have the person who's been taking notes on this in the audience. Miss D, are you comfortable with what we've got here? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was a yes from the audience, for those who couldn't hear on the mic. Dan is here to answer questions, and not everyone's comfortable speaking in public, but he is available as well. Julia?
Yes, I, I have a couple of questions and comments that I want to make about this. When I watched the Park Commission meeting, I was very disappointed to, to learn about some of the clause, the whereas, where they were planning to take the money for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative to cover the gap, and no one, you know, no one informed me that I was the person who put the amendment to the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative to at least tell me, you know, this is what is coming. So, I was also very disappointed to see that, you know, we have a gap in the Parks Department, and then we are looking to find a gap in other people's budget, and I also had a conversation with Scott. So, I am very glad that the Finance Committee, and especially, I want to thank John Crook, he's the director of, of the inspection, that they, he withdrew his disposition, so, and we can keep the money in the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. So, but I, I think that next time, I will appreciate that if someone is going to do something like that, inform the elders that they were part of the amendment in the budget. So, but I am very glad that we keep the money in the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. And also, I want to know, I am fine that if we had to pay fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollar, whatever we need to pay for this contract, but I want to know why fifty thousand dollar and not sixty and not seventy thousand? I want to know from where that fifty thousand dollar come from? I am, you know, I want to know if, what is the document that the city received to say we are going to, you know...
I guess that was the RFP.
It was a, it was an RFP.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't based on anything other than, they were the only one that submitted the RFP, and therefore were the, sort of the low bidder in the...
But we are breaching a contract, so which is the RFP we are talking about?
The contract at this point, if this resolution goes through, will be terminated.
I know, but I am confused, because it's, when it was expiration day for this contract?
The end of this year.
Okay.
December thirty-first of twenty twenty.
So, I am confused who, who initiated the, you know...
The correction was made based today, based on a recommendation by the city attorney to add that language into the resolution.
No, no, yeah, I think...
Yes, yes.
But I think it was also just based on the person currently operating it, wanting to make that change a year early, just because of the, I mean, costs that he's seen, and some of the tough weather years we've had the last couple of years.
Basically, yeah, he would have the inability to proceed under the current terms, and therefore, we wouldn't have anyone operating it. So, we're just making the formal step of terminating the contract if this motion's approved.
Dan?
So, he had a clause in the old contract...
Okay.
...that allows him to terminate in agreement with the city.
Okay.
And so, then, he exercised that clause, the city then put out the request for proposal, he submitted those numbers that are in this resolution.
And is open to anyone?
I didn't know that it was an RFP, so this was...
Dorothy?
So, my, my concern was, it seems like bad business to terminate contracts a year early. I would have preferred, if he needed more money for this year, that he come and he say, "I'm not making it, I really need more money for this year." Is there a reason that wasn't done? And then, start with a fresh new contract and RFP next year at, at the end of the current contract?
The, the reason we proceeded with an RFP is it gave the opportunity for other entities or individuals to step up, to maybe continue the golf course operation at that level, or potentially below. Maybe not the same proposal that was brought forth now. So, there was some, there was some communication out there that there were other interested parties in doing, in running the golf course, that's why we did an RFP.
I think there's also a concern about just giving someone more money under a current contract without that opportunity for other people to, to come forward and say, "Oh, I could do it for free," or "I could do it for," and then pay you at the city. You didn't know, but I think, you know, there's just that concern that in the middle of the contract, we're just, without going to RFP, without doing anything else, all of a sudden, we're just giving more money versus doing it this way, that option was there for someone else to come forward, and that was a risk that the person running the golf course took, you know, that Dan took, is that someone could have come in and, and essentially given us a better offer at that point.
So, was the RFP written for fifty thousand at ten years with an escalation at the end?
No, that was his recommendation.
Or how was that written?
It was written open-ended, who, what, what services they would provide, and at what dollar amount.
Yeah, it, it could have been, someone could have come in with five years, someone could have come in with fifty years, I guess, and they could have come in at any dollar amount, it was up to people submitting on what they thought that they could do it for, at what price.
And how, how long was the RFP made available, and how was it advertised?
Per our ordinance requirements, it was made available, and it was advertised accordingly.
It actually got posted twice, because the first time it wasn't, the wording wasn't very good, and so, the way that it was originally written, we had to essentially deny, we only got one from Dan the first time, and then, so we had to repost it again, so it actually got posted longer than, than normal. I got Dan...
You, you said other people had indicated interest...
Mm-hmm, yep.
But then they didn't respond.
Correct.
Correct.
They knew about it, though.
Leads me to wonder what, why they didn't respond.
You would have to ask them.
They did know about it, though. At least one person, you know, one organization did. I got Dan, and then Julia.
So, just a little background information for everyone, and I think Dan maybe did reach out to some of you, I don't, I don't know if he got to everyone or not. He did contact me last summer, and the situation is this, so he was being paid thirty thousand a year to, to run the operations of the golf course, and the issue became is, within that thirty thousand dollars, a lot of that, some, some of that money went for the operation of the golf course itself, and also, he has paid himself out of that money, so, he wasn't making a, you know, a whole lot of profit there, and, and I think he had a couple tough years, some weather-related events that hindered business, and they cost additional dollars, and so, you know, he said, "Hey, you know, I'm really hurting," you know, wanted to talk to some of the elders about that, and some of the staff about that, and then, in his previous contract that we just terminated, he had a clause that he had the option to terminate the contract. By doing so, he did then, like Dorothy, you mentioned, other people could then come and respond to the request for proposal with their own proposal, and, and then take over the operation of the golf course. Dan Larson was the only person who responded to that RFP, and subsequently was awarded the contract, could be rewarded with the contract tonight on a vote by the council.
Julia, do you have a, another comment?
No, I, I want to be, want to know if the, in the finance package, the RFP was attached as a support document, because I didn't see it.
I don't know.
I, I don't know if the RFP was included in the past.
Okay, because we usually sometimes put out...
We can get everyone a copy if they'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Dan?
I just wanted to say, taking out the part-time code enforcer is going to be a big disappointment for people in my neighborhood, where we still have piles and piles of garbage that sits out on the street every day. There's things that have been out there now for two months, there's another mattress that's out there, I mean, it doesn't stop, and that would have been one of our opportunities to get somebody to look into that and try to clean some of that up. So, I'm pretty disappointed about that.
Other comments at all? I don't see anything else. This needs a two-thirds vote, so we're going to do a roll call, just to make sure that it's two-thirds. So, so essentially, voting to approve with a few changes, so it's, to solve the budget issue, we're removing the quarter position, building inspection, and I think that's one of the big things, and then, the start date being January first is another...
We got to vote on the amendment.
Oh, yeah. So, first, I guess, would be the amendments to change it to January first, and to make the money essentially coming from removing that building inspection position, so...
And terminating it.
And terminating the previous contract, yeah. So, first, we're voting on the amendment to make all those changes, and then we'll vote on the whole thing. Sarah, quick question.
Can we add the friendly of just removing that whereas of the thousand-dollar increment, since that's part of the contract?
Yeah.
Of just clarification to...
Yeah, is that, can we just do that as a friendly, or...
Is that possible?
Change, yeah, to the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get that, okay, good. All right, so this is voting on those, the amendments essentially, and then we'll vote again on the whole thing, is it's changed?
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Alder Strossman?
Aye.
We have seven to one.
All right, so that passed, right? So, now we're vote on the main motion as amended, and again, we'll do the roll call, because we need the two-thirds vote.
Alder Radifrata?
Aye.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
No.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Seven to one, motion carried.
All right, thank you. All right, then we can go back to the start of the agenda, and new business, first we have a couple of claims, first one is actually on a claim for Larry Burrell. Pat, do you wanna speak to this?
I'm actually, on all claims, and I'll reiterate this, that our, our legal, our legal counsel has recommended denial of these claims, as well as our insurance company. So, in terms of the claim itself, I'll let Tracy, our clerk, speak to those.
Sure, this is a claim regarding a gentleman that was detained in the back of a squad vehicle, and the vehicle was struck by another squad backing into it, and the claimant had claimed injury.
Again, so this is recommended denial.
Insurance company has recommended denial as well as our city attorney.
And if I remember previous claims like this, the attorney also recommends no discussion.
That's correct.
So, if someone would like to make a motion to approve or deny, that would be great.
I'll move to deny.
Second by Julia, all, I guess, in favor of denial, say aye.
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 And any opposed, nay. All right, so the first one is approved to deny, and, and then is there a motion on the second claim? Do you, I guess, so do you wanna speak actually to Tracy, to what this claim is about?
We should read the individual's name.
Oh, for Caroline Rossing, sorry, actually a claim for Caroline Rossing.
Yep, so Caroline Rossing is the claimant, and this claim is for her vehicle was struck by a fire truck, and I believe the insurance company is recommending approval.
Okay, all right.
So, we still need to vote to approve it then?
Yep, you'd vote to approve.
Wait, I think there's some questions, I, Dorothy?
Yeah, I, I would think usually if the insurance company is approving it, we wouldn't have voted on it.
Right.
So, I would question if that's correct.
Yeah, that, that would be the first time we've ever had to approve a claim, I guess.
According to our legal, our legal counsel, it should, it should still be on the agenda, and it still should be acted on by council.
It's the first time I've seen it, too.
Okay, all right, so the recommendation is to approve it.
That's a spooky move to make if we're not certain.
Let me postpone it for two weeks.
We can postpone.
Someone would like to move to postpone for two weeks.
I move to postpone two weeks until the next common council meeting.
All right, second by Ann, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, good. All right, next up is a directory referral, and I don't, someone wants to make a motion on this resolution, maybe someone like Dorothy for, it's a senior, it's a senior center thing, so I don't know.
Okay. Let me get my papers in order. So, this is Resolution R zero five dash two zero, Edgewood College School of Nursing affiliation agreement with the Pittsburgh Senior Center for the Patient Advocacy Program. That program.
First, can you make a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? And by Julia, all right, now you can tell us what it is.
We've, the past year or two, have had people that were going to medical appointments with some of the seniors as part of their case management. This is a program where third and fourth-year nursing students would escort people to appointments and kind of help follow them through the process, both to help educate our folks and as a learning experience for the nursing students, there is no cost to us.
Great. Are there any questions on this? Yeah, and Sarah, she?
They, like, are they driving them to appointments? Or are they just gonna be at the appointments to kinda help you do the?
Not entirely certain of that, we would not take a position of liability in any case.
Okay.
Other questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, that one is approved. Next one, maybe someone at Public Works wanna do this one, Dan?
Sure. At this time, make a motion to. It's on, um, we'll make a motion to approve Resolution R oh nine dash twenty, revised final resolution exercising police powers and levying special assessments for two thousand nine curb and gutter and driveway replacements in the city of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin.
Sir, a second? All right, did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve? Did Finance approve?
They did.
Then, okay, do you wanna speak to what?
Sure. Um, yeah, what, what's going on here is, there was some reestimates, and it actually saved the, the residents' money on the replacement of the curb and gutter, some measurements were made by Public Works Department, and there were some cost savings. This is a special assessment that the, the individuals paid to have curb and gutter replacements where there's damage, and so, it, it's a net positive for the, the residents, and because we're within ten thousand dollars of the estimated cost, there's no need for a public hearing.
All right.
So, two small additional points, if I may, so, so this did not impact our budget, it affected a net of twelve people, twelve, twelve, twelve residents, rather, and those twelve residents will actually see a decrease in that bill, so there is no downside.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, number three, maybe someone from Finance wanna do an approval on this one?
I guess, well, we can make a motion to approve Resolution R dash eighteen dash twenty, a resolution to approve a contract with Dean Tony to accept the two thousand twenty neighborhood Nevergier funding.
Second.
Second, is there, uh, what did Finance do?
They approved.
They approved, all right, and maybe have Wade speak to this real quick? This is something we did, I think this is the first year this year.
Yep, so this would be a continuation of a program started in two thousand nineteen under the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, essentially funding two city employee, or two city residents as part-time city employees, to better connect neighborhood residents with services and resources. I think we had some successes in two thousand nineteen, certainly hope to build on them in two thousand twenty, and again, this is all funded via Dane County.
I believe, I heard also that the county is committed to continue funding this as long as we're willing to.
Yeah, I think, as long as we're interested, I think there'll be, there'll be monies available.
We saw earlier they're gonna help the Census Committee.
Right, right.
All right, questions on this at all? Yeah, Julia?
How much was last year, it was the same amount?
So, last year we got, I think, nineteen five hundred, and they started in March, end of March, so this year we have a thousand dollars more, twenty-five hundred, and we'll have them work basically from now until the end of the year, so probably some more hours available for them to, to work.
Any further questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. All right, now, number four, maybe someone else from Finance?
You wanna do it, or you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Okay, we'll make a motion to approve Resolution R oh four dash twenty, approving a development agreement between thirty-one oh one SFH LLC and the city of Pittsburgh.
Sir, a second?
Yes, second.
All right, second by Janelle, did Finance approve?
Yes, he did.
All right, um, do you want the group to come up and present?
Yeah, if, if we could have the developers present first, then we'll have our financial consultant, Ellers, come up and give that presentation, and at that point in time, once the presentations are done, if this body wishes to go into closed session, you may, it's on the agenda, Finance Committee decided against it, all discussion was non-negotiation, so the only thing we should be discussing in closed session is details of negotiation, not just general questions, so that's why Finance decided not to go into closed session.
All right, Mike, you're by.
All right, so I'll introduce myself first, I'm Michael Thorson, on behalf of Inventor Capital, developing on behalf of the development entity, thirty-one oh one SFH LLC, briefly.
Ned Hoyt, I can answer the partners on this.
Jolie with Jolie Architects, so everyone is architect on the project.
We have to do this for the cameras. So, what we are proposing to do is demolish the all-juice factory, which has been an underutilized blight on South Fish Hatchery Road, replace that with a mixed-use multifamily residential apartment and commercial and retail development project. It will be a hundred and fifty-seven units of market-rate apartments on four floors of residential, over a at-grade covered parking with an environmental green roof, and bookended on Fish Hatchery Road, the north and the south with commercial and retail components. I will then turn it over to my expertise here on the architecture side to kind of go through some of those elements, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Yeah, you can see on the screen there, there, we provided some renderings, and I can, I'll give a brief overview, and if any questions, certainly you can go into more detail if you want. This is a, a view along Fish Hatchery, looking east, northeast, at the building, so on the far left side of this view, you see a double-height space, two-story height retail component on the north end of the, of the site, and then as you travel down on the, on the far right hand of the image, you see a single-story height element that is, yep, that's the, that's the northern side, so that's looking now right at the corner of the new Traceway Drive Extension and Fish Hatchery Road, so that's the northernmost commercial element of the building, which is four to five thousand square feet. And this perspective you hold of there, that's the side that faces the new Traceway Extension, so we are at the far eastern side of that new Traceway Extension, looking back west, and again, you see the, the mixed-use component there, the, the commercial retail at a double-height space, and the apartments beyond, which is, there's four levels of apartments over a complete level of underground or covered parking, and on top of that covered parking, I know we have some images in the packages, package as well, the building creates a U-shape around an outdoor courtyard, which is a green roof that has, that will serve as common amenity space for the residential units. All high-quality materials along Traceway, the new Traceway Extension and Fish Hatchery Road, there's significant masonry, that's the reddish material that you see on the corners, we have some masonry, that's the grayish, and some metal panels, which is the grayish-white material, and then some fiber cement siding as, as accent material throughout, so, happy to answer any, any more detailed questions if you want, but in the interest of time, that's a, that's the project in a nutshell.
Dorothy?
Do you guys, by chance, have a flat map showing the location of the parcel within the area? My interest mostly is to know where it lays as, as it relates to Post Road. I know it comes up toward Post Road, but I don't know how close it gets.
No, this isn't on Post Road at all, this is where Traceway actually comes out.
This is south, this is south of Post Road.
About two blocks south.
Oh, okay. If you're familiar with. That I'm thinking of.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna extend Traceway across, and this is gonna be south of the, the new Traceway.
Okay, okay.
It's almost directly across from the new Plesco senior housing project.
Yeah, I had it closer to, because I, we've been, oh, we're gonna hear about the Copa project, and I know they're interested in property real near there.
They're looking closer to Post, closer to Post Road.
Correct, so I, I just wanted to make sure that they, there was plenty of space between. Okay, thank you.
Other questions at all? Yeah, Julia?
Financial.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, if there's nothing else for these guys, then we can have our representative from Ellers come up and speak, thank you. There might be more questions to come, you're not off the hook yet.
We'll be here for redirect.
Good evening. I am Frank Roman, I'm with Ellers and Associates, who is the financial advisors to the city of Pittsburgh. My background, very briefly, for those who haven't met yet, has been over twenty-five years in commercial real estate and financing, both on the banking side and the debt and equity positions on the development side. We were engaged to review the project in order to provide financial assistance within tax increment District Ten. We review the costs, the market rents, the vacancies, the, the return projections the developer is expecting, and to make sure that this is a reasonable request, but not unduly enriching the developer in providing that assistance. So, I, I'll try to do a summary on that real quick, and if there's any further detailed questions, we can get into that as well. First of all, for tax increment finance assistance, we have to solve for the but-for test, and that is that but for providing a financial assistance to this project, it would not move forward at its current time and its current configuration and quality, so, and our findings have been that this meets the but-for test. The project is gonna demo, demo the existing juice plant, which has been vacant for now several, I think, three or four years, so there are extraordinary costs involved in doing that. There's also some contamination on the site, which was reviewed in, in finance a bit more depth, but the underground tanks that were moved, the soils were not fully remediated at that time, so there's gonna be additional environmental work to be done here. I think you saw from the elevations that the grade of the site is pretty substantial, sloping down from one end to the other, so a lot of earthwork to be involved there as Very simply, the, the request for assistance is being contemplated to be instructured as a pay-as-you-go, which is, basically shifts the risk to the developers to produce value on that. The city's not being asked to issue any funds upfront, they are, the developer would be reimbursed by the additional value that they create over and above the, the current assessment. That plant is, is assessed at somewhere around a million nine, the projected value of this at the start of operations would be about twenty-five and a half million or so, so there's a significant increase in value, and also getting rid of a blight condition of the, of the vacant plant, so. In the discussions and negotiations that we've come up with, which have also been included into a development agreement that's being asked for consideration here as well, the, the city would retain thirty-three percent of that incremental value, and against the, the increment is the value produced over the existing two million dollars, so the city would retain thirty-three percent of that for other project costs within the district, and also can be made available for costs incurred within a half-mile radius of that district also. So, with significant work being done on Fish Hatchery Road, this would be, assist the, the city significantly and be able to move some of those projects forward a little bit, a little bit quicker. City also be reimbursed for any administrative costs in, in administering the TID, filing fees, legal accounting, and those type of things, so. So, we, we've looked at this. So, um, so we, we've looked at this on, uh, pretty extensively as far as the returns that the developer would expect to see on this project, um, in both, uh, the cash-on-cash return, which is an annual- Bless you.
Sorry about that.
Annual, annual cash flow divided by the equity the developer's putting in, and then also, on an overall basis, the internal rate of return, which is a time-value, uh, consideration from the day that the equity goes in, uh, the annual cash flow is received by the developer, and then at the end of either the earlier of ten years or an earlier sale of the project, uh, the developer would expect to see a, a significant, uh, return of the, uh, the proceeds from the sale. Generally, in the market that we're seeing, uh, those internal rate of returns of the IRRs are gen-, are generally about eleven to sixteen to eighteen percent or so. This project initially is projected to be below that level, so, uh, they are certainly not receiving an undue return on the assistance that's being provided. The amount that's being suggested is, uh, three-point-five million dollars in overall pay-as-you-go assistance. Five-hundred thousand of that would be for the continuation or the extension of Traceway, uh, on the east side of Fish Hatchery Road, and which would, uh, stretch across the northern portion of the development site. Uh, also, there's the, you know, some of the environmental work there, et cetera, and on the, um, three million dollars of that would be going for the other costs that I mentioned, the environmental, the grading, uh, the demo of the, of the juice plant, et cetera. So, um, we have found that the financial returns on the project do not exceed, uh, any current metric that we would expect, uh, and would still be in the level that would, uh, attract investment capital. It would be on, very much on the lower end of that range. In the development agreement, we've also incorporated what we call look-back provision. So, um, essentially what that is, it says if, if the developer's requesting this three-and-a-half million in order to get this project moving forward at a certain return level, um, this look-back would set a, a threshold or a bar, uh, a certain percentage points higher than that in order to provide a little bit of flexibility, but also to make sure that the, if the project was significantly more successful, again, that it would not unduly enrich the developers past a certain level. In that regard, this, uh, the threshold for this look-back is set that we believe, um, well, I, I don't wanna say likely will not be attained, but it would take, uh, quite a bit for it to get to that level and, and be activated. So, um, other considerations are that the, um, you know, without this assistance, the, uh, the cash-on-cash returns would be below five percent, which would be, uh, an untenable position for an investor. Generally, those rate, rates are seven to eight percent or so, cash-on-cash every year. Um, and the internal rate of return of the IRR without assistance would be, um, about six and a half percent, which again would be significantly below the, you know, ten, eleven, twelve percent kind of base threshold that investors would expect. So, answering the but-for question again, these, this project would likely not go forward with investment returns at those, uh, minimum levels. Other considerations is the, um, the city's, uh, policy is that they would expect that the, the repayment of this, um, municipal revenue obligation to the developer in order, in other words, returning a portion of the taxes paid over that period of time to extinguish that three-and-a-half million dollars assistance level. Uh, the city expects that to be done within a fifteen-year term. The, um, the tax increment district, um, in itself is a blight, blighted district is not, uh, wouldn't expire until twenty forty-three, but this assistance is expected to pay off within fourteen years, so it's within certainly the, the, um, termination date of the tax increment district, but also within the, uh, the stated guidelines of the city in having that assistance being, being extinguished. So, it meets the but-for test. The returns do not unduly enrich the developer. It falls within the time periods that the city is expecting. It removes blight from a, um, a longstanding condition, and it produces significant tax value over and above what it's currently being assessed at. This was discussed in a little bit more detail in Finance Committee, but it's been, um, negotiated those, those provisions and those terms also into a development agreement that will be for consideration, and, uh, and our, from our perspective, will you find this be a, an attractive, uh, assistance package to provide for this project?
All right. Matt, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I would like to thank Frank and Ellers and, uh, the developers involved in this project. We did spend a lot of hours-
And Valerie.
And, yeah, and Valerie. Uh, we did spend a lot of hours on negotiating the development agreement you have in front of you. We believe it's a win-win, um, for the city. We believe it's really a win for what we're trying to do on Fish Hatchery Road. So, um, the staff recommendation is approval of this development agreement.
Did you have a question, Julia?
Yeah, so, um, I have a question regarding exhibit number C. You know, when you talk about the allowable project cost, uh, you mentioned that there are three million dollars, I mean, um, and then when I, I would like to know, uh, what is the detail inside of three million dollars? Because we usually, I have seen other developer agreement where they, sometime there is a detail of what it encompasses. You know, because I went to the exhibit H, and I tried to look for the three million here, and I, the only thing that I ca-, I found was the demo. Avestos, two-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollar. I found the Tracey Way Extension, but I would like to see, you know, uh-
I don't think you're gonna find a dollar-for-dollar comparison with that. You know, again, we mentioned there's significant grading that has to be done with the site. Um, there's DNR costs that are involved, as we mentioned, with the soil contamination that has to be, um, essentially, um, Mike, if I've got this right, uh, the soil moved out to the side, building foundation put in place, then soil moved back over and then capped again. So, there's a lot of that that's in there that is not in, uh, the, the exhibit is a little bit more of a, of a, uh, more generalized budget than what you would, um, see if you actually had a contractor's detailed breakout. So, unfortunately, I, I can't point to a dollar-for-dollar correlation there.
But it should be like a budget.
So, there, there, there's a-
If you can make sure you're on the mic, that'd be great.
So, there's a broad list of categories of, uh, eligible costs, and within the agreement, there will be very specific itemized, line-by-line, what costs were associated with the, the TIF expenditures.
No, I was curious, because sometime it's provided in developer agreement those detail, but I didn't see it here. You know what I mean?
Frank, would this be kind of a difference between, since this is kind of a redevelopment versus a greenfield site, is that kind of one of the differences with the redevelopment? Is that why it's, maybe you don't have the detail that you would if this was a, just a new building on a new site where you didn't have some of these things? Is that one of the differences? Because we haven't done a lot of re-
Well, you know, we, we're asked to look at these sometimes in different periods of time. Uh, the developers don't have a, an actual general contract negotiated at this time. They've got pricing estimates for certain components of this, but, uh, that's not been formalized. So, it's hard to put that into a firm budget at this point, uh, and the progress that we're at right now. But that will be, um-
Yeah, that will be one of the points. As, as Frank mentioned, we are at, at a ninety to ninety-five percent cost estimate with our contractors. We're moving very quickly on this because we're cognizant of a certain deadline on timeframes to kind of open when leasing season happens. So, final numbers on a lot of these things are still, would I say they're ballpark? No, but they're, they're better than ballpark, but they're within plus or minus five kind of percent. So, we don't have everything itemized to the extent that you would expect to say, this is a dollar now, now, now. But at, at the point in time when this agreement, uh, goes into effect, we, of course, would have all of those things.
Can I ask another question?
Can I go to Genal quick?
Okay.
So, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong here. I think that we've got a handful of things that, in part, we discussed at finance. So, within this parcel, we've got these four elements that need to really be corrected, whether it's your organization or any other organization that's looking at developing that parcel. And so, we've got the demolition of an existing site. We've got some contamination issues at that site that we're working with DNR on. We've got grading issues, and then we've got road issues. I'm assuming that some of these elements are somewhat predictable, but when we start dealing with contamination issues on that site, there's gonna be some, a little bit more of getting in there, seeing what we've got, and then making some decisions, um, to ultimately meet requirements for not only your project, but DNR.
That, that's exactly correct. And, and what I would go even further to add is, so, there are, um, elements right now that we believe we have very good cost estimates for, but, for example, we have discovered there is about fifty thousand dollars' worth of toxic chemicals that are being stored in drums and things on the site that we didn't know about until a week ago. So, those are the types of costs that step in, um, along the way that we have contingencies for, but we don't have planned and budgeted, uh, upfront. Um, one of the points that I would also make about the site, um, so there's a deed restriction on the site. Um, in, in the mid-nineties, they discovered and removed some leaking underground storage tanks, um, as Frank did mention earlier. Uh, they were not completely remediated, the soils were not. So, the DNR allowed the site to be capped, uh, and that cap, uh, runs with, with the deed to the land, and you cannot actually uncap or do anything without the permission of the DNR. So-
And the cap is exist-, you know, essentially the paving and-
Right now, the site is a ninety-plus percent concrete, um, or pavement and asphalt, uh, covered. So, it's, it's not great for stormwater runoff or anything like that, but it is, keeps the stormwater from running down through the petroleum contamination and taking that down into groundwater. So, any redevelopment of the site would have to substantially have a structure which then, after redevelopment, did replace that cap and keep the petroleum from leaching down. So, it's not, uh, a site where i-, it, there are challenges, so that you can't just do any old type of development. You couldn't put a park there. You couldn't put, uh, a couple of two-story apartments here and one here and one here and have green space in the middle. It, it has to be a site which substantially replaces the current impervious cap, or the DNR would not allow the redevelopment. Um, so those challenges, when you do uncap something like that, you then tend to incur additional costs that you did not know about prior to doing so. So, back to your question, once all of these things are determined within the construction process, before this bond starts paying out after occupancy and lease-up, uh, we will know all of those costs, and there will be an itemized enumeration of what they are.
Does that answer your question?
Do you have another follow-up, Julia?
No, my other question was, um, in case that, you know, there are more unknown and more extra, additional cost, so it doesn't mean that this development agreement can be amended, or this, this is final?
Extra additional cost beyond the development.
Okay, I want to be sure, because, you know, it happened in this part.
Unless you want to open that up.
Unless we want to revise. We're comfortable accepting, uh, the risks. This, this is not our, our first site where we've dealt with significant contamination, so we do believe, um, we've got very good, uh, environmental engineers, um, a, a good team behind us, our civil engineers are exceptional as well. We do believe that we have, um, of course, contingencies, uh, in our pro forma, uh, in our budgets, um, that would be able to cover anything that is over and above what we are contemplating that are for the TIF.
Uh, Dorothy and Julia.
Yeah, I found the map that I was looking for, and I'm, one of my questions was, does it take this, um, part of the parcel where the building with the rounded front is, and it looks like no?
No, that, that is a, a Bowman property.
Right. And GLED, talking about contamination, um, it doesn't go into the big parking lot in back, because I expect there'll be more issues back there. The question that I had was, knowing that a gazillion people will want to know, um, is there an anticipation of the, um, lease apartment rents at this point?
Oh, cer-, certainly. So, we, we do a, a fairly extensive, um, canvas or survey, if you will, of, uh, achievable rents in comparable structures within, um, the vicinity of our site. We have, I believe, in one of the slide deck pages, um, a kind of a starting-from-type of rent structure. We, we believe that it's gonna be in the, on average, a dollar sixty to a dollar sixty-five per square foot, um, certainly slightly higher for, say, studios or smaller square-footage units, but lower than that for higher square-footage units. Think you will find that they are competitive with, if not priced slightly better than some of the more recent builds in, in that Sain Road area or that Lacy area of Fitchburg.
Okay. I, I have a hard time wrapping my head, because I don't think in price per square foot.
I, I would off the top of my head tell you, but I, I don't actually have, so these are, again, also, uh, yeah, here we go. This, this'll help. I didn't have, I didn't want to misspeak, um, for the public record. So, you know, we would contemplate, um, I think we would have some studio units from around eight hundred dollars a month, and then your, uh, smaller one-bedrooms, uh, nine-fifty to a thousand dollars, uh, larger one-bedrooms and onepluses, moving into the eleven-fifty to twelve-hundred-dollar ranges. Um, we would have the, uh, smaller two-bedrooms around the fifteen to sixteen-hundred-dollar, uh, and then we have, I'd wanna say, six percent of our units are, are three-bedrooms, so not, not a great deal of three-bedrooms, and those are all in the eighteen-hundred to two-thousand-dollar-a-month ra-, range.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
And those are commensurate with market of what we've seen as well, so we've vetted those too.
Julia.
Also, I want to mention that I really like this project. I think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a great investment for the corridor. I think that we are using, uh, TIF money for some, you know, remediation issue that we have, and this is supposed to be TIF money where, where we should use the money. So, um, and I, uh, you know, I am, I wanna approve this, and, and the other thing that I want to mention that, because you guys live in Fitchburg, the developer, you're investing in the community you live, and this is giving me another relief that, you know, the money, uh, you are here, invest in the community, you live in the city, so this one is a plus for me.
Thank you, very, very kind words. I would say, um, the only reason we're building this building is so we can move our offices five minutes away from home, but- Might be stretching it a little bit.
Are there further questions at all? I don't sense any desire to go into closed session, so I, we don't need to do that unless someone wants to. And I don't see anything else. Genal just stepped out, but I guess we'll move on without her, I guess, so. We do a roll call anyway. Okay, all right, let's, uh, do a roll call.
Wanna wait for?
Well, I don't know how long she's gonna be.
All right.
We just put her as, as name as she have to.
Alder Radafrada.
Aye.
Alder Barr.
Aye.
Alder Clodder.
Aye.
Alder Crowsey.
Aye.
Genal Stain. Alder Schroeder.
Aye.
Alder Scott.
Aye.
Alder Strausman.
Aye.
Seven, motion carried.
All right, yeah. So, it would pass even if she said no. I think I know what she would say, but I can't vote for her, so. All right, that is approved. Great. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along to administrators' report. Yeah, I can come back to you. All right, uh, next then is Plan Commission. Um, do you wanna do a resolution for the first piece here?
The first one from the Plan Commission is Resolution, it's R zero-six dash twenty-
The first one from the plant commission is resolution, it's R06-20 FP 2327-19. It's approving a plat, a final plat request, FP 2327-19 by Michael Marty, agent for Green Tech Land, the company LLC for approval of the final plat for the sixth addition to Nine Springs. It was lot two, CSM 14998, lot 5961, in-out lot 3638, fifth addition to Nine Springs. Plan approved it, I'll move it.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so you had the "an" on that one. Chris is actually here to speak to this. Why don't you, Chris, come up and tell us what you got going on here?
Chris Armstrong, 5803 Auburn Drive, representing Avante Properties, and the developer requesting this final plat. This is a reconfiguration of a past plat. What happened in our original layout of that block was, we had, our third building included a pool attached to it as we got into the, trying to serve that clubhouse and pool area for the entire portfolio or 700 apartments there. We wanted to make the clubhouse bigger, detached it from the original building, so it stands alone out there as you see it now. And one of the artifacts of that is that we had a path that went from the sidewalk to the bike path in the back, and it had to be moved about 20 feet south. So, kind of a lot of paperwork to accomplish a 20-foot move of a path, but that's why we're here, so.
All right. Questions at all? So one thing, I know it says in here that there's less lots. Does that mean that you're going to build less buildings or anything like that, or how's that?
No, well, it'll still be five apartment buildings across there, and actually, I think with the clubhouse, it's probably one more building than we were anticipating, so, yeah, I'm not sure how.
All right, Julia?
Are you planning to build this?
So our next, we're going to break ground in the spring on our next building, a 71 unit. Yeah, so about a $10 million building, yeah.
And how many one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment? Do you have like, do you have three-bedroom apartment? Is it like one or two?
I think that, I, I think we have a couple of three bedrooms, and quite a bit of one bedrooms and studios.
Other questions at all? Seeing none. We can go ahead and vote. All in favor of approving resolution R0620, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved.
Good night.
Thanks, Chris. All right, moving along, Tom?
Resolution two is our 07-20 FP, it's 2326-19, resolution approving a final plat request, FP 2326-19 by Charles O'Brien, agent for the O'Brien family, LTD partnership for approval of the final lot for this second addition to Stoner Prairie. This was outlot six and outlot seven, first addition to Stoner Prairie. I'll move it, plan approved it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. And you want to speak to this, Tom?
Neither man.
All right, so this is just continuation of the William Ryan project that has been going on for a while. They've already built a lot of houses out there, and this provides that connection to Lacy Road, and also the connection to the Veridian project that we actually have on the agenda coming up as well. And I know there were some concerns about having that kind of second access point out that side, and this will provide that, so that's good. We do have Deborah Beaver here, who is available to answer questions. Unless you've changed your mind and want to speak, you're welcome to, but she is available. But I believe it's following the plan that's been established for a while now. There's, you know, no changes or anything to what the neighborhood is expecting.
Basically, a second out.
Yep.
You know, that's what we're talking about.
Yep, tiny built houses, second exit out of that neighborhood.
So confirming this is really consistent with what we previously approved, so there are no modifications from that.
Correct. Yeah, I believe this is all single-family homes, similar to what they've already built. William Ryan has built.
When will they start building those homes? This is spring?
I don't, do you want to speak to that?
Hi, so I'm Debbie Beaver, I'm vice president for William Ryan Homes, I'm representing the O'Brien Trust. So we are currently building at Stoner Prairie already. We anticipate building the infrastructure for what we call Phase Three, which is the final plat. As soon as we have some resolution to the Lacy Road sanitary sewer that needs to be put in for us to connect to, so my guess would be late summer.
Any other questions at all?
So that one, can I have a question about the, what she mentioned at the end, the sewer? So that one, this, this part of the lot, it had to be connected to another sewer, or what is it?
Yeah, that would be connected to the sewer along Lacy Road.
Like the other ones?
That's, well, there'll be an extension along somewhere, too.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So it'll all connect together, but-
But, okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, that passes. All right.
Thank you.
Moving along to number three. Tom, you are-
Three, here's resolution R08020 FP, it's 2325-19, approving final plat request, FP 2325-19 by David Simon, agent for Pittsburgh Campus Two LLC for approval of the final plat, plat for Crescent Crossing, lot one, CSM 8023. I'll move it, plan approved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Do you guys want to speak at all? Available for questions, all right. And this is also, you know, following the plan that we've seen earlier. Plant commission approved this as well. If there's questions or comments from anyone-
I think it's a great development. I am waiting to see if I can move there.
All right, you got a sale right there. All right. No, nothing? All right. Then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. All right, that is approved as well. Moving-
The next one is resolution R236-19, a resolution endorsing the city's request to amend in the urban service area for the Fahy property in the McGaw neighborhood. I'll move it, and plan approved.
Actually, Tom, if you could move to table this, that would actually be the preference on this one. Pat, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we need to postpone this to, as of now, a date certain, which would be the next meeting. There were some issues with the Public Works review and the proposed sewer layout, so we need to make sure those issues are resolved before we make a recommendation to CARPSY.
So if you could move to postpone-
I wasn't aware of it. I'll move postponement then. I wasn't aware of it.
Saying by "an", all in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, thank you. We did number five already, so moving on to number six.
Number six is, resolution is 2020-0-02, RZ 2328-19, approving a rezon request, RZ 2328-19 by Andrew Chitwood, agent for Midland LLC to rezon property associated with location is 2101 Fishatchee Road, from Business Highway to Plan Development District, General Implementation Plan, and I'll move it, and plant commission passed it.
All right, is there a second? All right. And do you want to speak to this?
Go for it.
This is, I guess, really in relation to the project we just approved, that Mike and that are doing as well. So, I don't know. Pat, do you want to speak any further?
Yeah, it just gets into the zoning of the property, and the PDD is a Plan Development District, so this is all that you're approving, approving at this point in time. It's a general implementation plan. You'll also see a specific implementation plan in the future.
And follows what we've seen for a while now.
Yep, typical.
Pat, is it hard to put that apartment unit back up on the screen for two seconds?
Oh, no. Now that you said that, it might be. Or now that I said that. Yeah, I got it right here. Just might take a second.
It's wonderful having everything nice and connected and working again.
Yeah.
Both the projectors and TVs.
Is that view okay?
Fishatchee Road.
Yeah, this is it.
From the other, the other picture.
This view?
Right there, right there.
Yep.
Just for the public, as well as if you're not, I'm, I'm pretty confident the council knows about it, but if you go down Fishatchee Road north right now, you'll see this fenced-in area. That's it. That's what you're looking at. Post Road will go across, excuse me, Traceway Drive will go across, and I can't help but to mention, none of you were around the city at the time. They're about to take away, correct me if I'm wrong, the Bowman Dairy?
They're doing the old juice factory.
Wasn't the dairy in before the juice?
It was.
It was.
Wasn't it?
Part of the dairy.
They won't be taking down the octagon or-
You would think I'd write in a book, you know, but I'm really not. Before it was a juice, it was a dairy. It was Robin Yon Juice Company, or-
That's still on Andy Bowman's land to the north, but this did used to be part of the dairy. It's just not the remaining dairy building that's still standing there.
Well, it's part of it.
Yeah.
So if you happen to see something about a cow when you start taking this apart, you'll know about it, right? But that's, that's a deal. This was the, part of it. Am I right?
Hopefully you don't find any cows still wandering in the property.
Part of it. Just tell them, yes.
Just give them what he wants.
I'm done. Take it away.
All right. Anything else? All right. Then move along to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, then that passes as well. And number seven, one more time.
Number seven is, was the ordinance is 2020-0-03, RZ 2324-19, approving a rezon request, RZ 2324-19 by David Simon, agent for Pittsburgh Campus Two LLC to rezon lot one, CSM 8023, from Plan Development District, to General Implementation Plan, and Plan Development District to a specific implementation plan, is what I mean, for the Crescent Crossing final plat, which is FP 2325-19, and plan approved it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
A second about Dorothy. And again, this is the Crescent Crossing that Veridian is doing. We've seen this a number of times, including earlier tonight. Is there any further questions or concerns about this? Dorothy?
I was just going to say, we're wamping the whole thing through in one night.
Yeah. Well, there's been a lot of nights before this, but, all right. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, that is approved as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Public Works, Dan?
Motion to approve resolution R178-19, approving second amendment to the agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of Terre Vessa.
Oh, actually, I think, with this, sorry, we need to postpone this one, too.
Okay, no, that's okay. And I'll motion to table to a date certain.
Postpone.
You're postponed to a date certain.
Is there a second by "an"? All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, that is postponed. Pat, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it just needs, we need some additional information for the Public Works Department before we can do any approval.
All right. Number two, though, you can approve that one.
Okay, a motion to approve resolution R21-19, a resolution to adopt a standard operating procedure for long-term maintenance of private stormwater facilities.
All right, saying, and did Public Works approve?
They did.
All right, and you want to speak to what this is?
Yes, so for private stormwater facilities, it's going to be an operating procedure and disposal, how you operate one of those. It was taken up by Public Works and approved.
Yeah, I think the big question, the problem is that with private stormwater facilities, we didn't really have any long-term kind of guidelines and rules in place, and I think Newtown, there was some issues and concerns, and so, and as part of that, we realized, oh, we need to clean this up and make sure we have some guidelines and structure and requirements for these private stormwater facilities. Public ones, we do, and it's not really an issue, but there's some, there's a number of private ones in the city. We want to make sure we have some guidelines for that. Julia?
Yeah, no, my question is how many do we have and where they are usually?
Where I can give you. Usually they're in tucked back in the back of homes and neighborhoods.
Okay.
Yeah, and so access, as the mayor mentioned, we, we really don't have a policy in place how we access that, and we check them to make sure they're being maintained, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. So this basically gives us an outline of how we're going to do that long-term.
The one there sometime in this new subdivision, that one are considered private, too?
Generally, the ones, I shouldn't say generally, for the most part, the ones in the newer subdivisions, we take over as public. There are a few that are private in special circumstances, given their location, in proximity to the homes and such, but we do have policies in place in our subdivision agreement as to how we maintain those. It's the older ones we're trying to address here.
It's mainly older neighborhoods, I think, if this is an issue. Dorothy?
Should property owners that might have some of these issues on their properties anticipate there's going to be added expense in doing this?
I, I don't believe so. In these situations, we will be working just for plans as to, we'll actually go in there and look at the situation, make sure it's working, and as to the fix for that situation, I believe it will be either on the original developer or the city will assume responsibility, but I can, we can check on that. A lot of cases, the original developer may not even be around anymore.
Mm-hmm.
"An".
I had asked in Public Works, too, about one of those situations where if there's a new owner, would they know anything about that? And Mike said that's on the deed, that anybody that has a piece of property where that would be affected, they would know about that.
Further questions at all? All right, seeing none. I guess all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that passes. Dan?
Motion to approve resolution R225-19, a resolution to approve a public stormwater easement at the end of Newton Street.
Is there a second? Saying by "an", and the Public Works approved?
They did.
And plant commission also approved, I know that. Any want to speak to what this is?
So Tom had talked a lot about this issue with the standing water right over in his neighborhood, District Four, and this is a solution to that problem that we've long been waiting for, and so they will be addressing the standing water problem there through the easement.
All right. Questions on this at all?
Is this one is a private stormwater that is going to become public, isn't it? stormwater that is gonna become public, isn't it?
Pat, do you want to speak that?
This is a utility easement for a future uh project here. Uh, I mean, an existing project that will be taken over by the city, so it will be public.
And how much is gonna cost the city to maintain that? Do you know that or?
I, yeah, I don't know. Um, the exact dollar amount, it'll deter, it'll be determined by the uh uh, you know, by the life cycle of the piece of property. The homes, the homes that'll be paying taxes out there will ultimately hopefully cover the cost.
Further questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that passes. Dan?
Motion to approve Resolution R two thirty-seven dash nineteen, a resolution granting a below-ground public utility easement on Outlet Nine in the Plat of Teravessa.
All right, so, and the Public Works approved?
They did.
I don't know, Plan Commission approved. Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll let Pat talk about this one.
All right.
Uh, this is sort of, this is sort of the same scenario where we're um we're granting a below-ground um utility easement. Uh, it's on an outlet in Teravessa that uh will end up taking over. So the easement would be probably going through public right away. I would assume it would be a roadway or a terrace or a sidewalk.
Get an electric and eighteen D fiber.
Yep.
That neighborhood.
Yep.
All right, any further questions on this one at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Dan, anything else from Public Works you want to speak to?
No.
All right. Sarah, we did your resolution. Is there a report for Parks Commission for us?
Uh, we met this last weekend for Parks and we had a lively discussion regarding the current wind turbine in like McKee. So I think that that's being referred out, I believe, to plan in the future was my understanding, um, that I just there are some residents who really um are against having anything changed kind of within that wind turbine. And there are some residents who were, or, excuse me, not residents, commission members who were against having the turbine changed at all. And there were other residents who were um passionate about kind of having it being an education project for students, that the wind turbine was, the intention was, so I think just as a heads up, it, there was a lot of interest in the Parks Commission and I'm curious to hear how it goes in plan.
I know one of the weird things is that it's actually owned by MGNE, so.
Yes.
If they want to take it down, I don't know.
They can take it down, yeah.
The city doesn't own it.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on Parks?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, uh Library Board. Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
Why uh MGNE wants uh to take um that out? Do you know that?
Yes, the wind turbine isn't functioning as they ever planned it. It actually is taking more resources to have the functioning panel of the wind turbine than that the wind turbine ever produced. So it's actually creating more. Yeah, it's, it's going against anything that was ever proposed of actually using energy rather than creating energy.
Yeah, I think it's a technology that they were hoping would be beneficial and useful in cities especially. And it's turning out that it's not actually generating any energy, even though it spins.
It's big, yeah.
It's like a big art project though. All right, Ann, Library Board?
We're meeting tomorrow night, uh, January fifteenth at five-thirty at the library. And also just to mention that uh the library during the summer has a reading program. But all, this year, they've got a winter reading program that's going through the month of January into February. And you can pick up forms at the library and win prizes. It's um for adults, teens, and children. So if anybody's interested in that, stop at the library.
All right, great. Uh, Commission on Aging Well, Dorothy?
Thank you, I have a resolution. Uh, it's our two-two-four dash nineteen, approving the twenty-twenty Dane County contract for senior center services. Commission on Aging Well, which is not written in here, um, passed it.
Um, so you're, are you moving to approve?
I moved it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and Finance, did you approve?
We did.
All right, and the Public Safety approved?
Yes, we did.
All right, do you want to speak to it, Dorothy?
And this is the um every-year contract that we get for case management services for our senior center from the county. This year, it is eighty-nine thousand, hundred and twenty-three thousand we will be getting from the county for our services. Little chart, um, that's up eighty-six hundred from last year and more than forty-four thousand since twenty sixteen. So it has been, the center has been performing well according to the county standard and they have been being rewarded with ever-increasing amounts of money to help them do better.
Yeah, I think that's the key is, the reason that the money we get keeps going up is because people are using those services, we're doing, providing excellent services through the senior center. And so I guess you get rewarded by, do more, here's some money to help do more. So that's good. Any other questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that passes. Anything else on Commission on Aging Well?
And then we meet February thirteenth at eight-thirty in the morning next.
All right, RCC, Sarah?
Our next meeting is Monday, January twenty-seventh at six-thirty.
All right, Transportation and Transit?
No report.
All right, Seda?
No report. Our next meeting is January twenty-third.
All right, Agonoral Affairs, Jill?
Coming up a date to be determined in February. We also had um another meeting this past Monday on Lake Barney and, you know, this is um to say that this is a significant project would probably be an understatement. Uh, you know, I just really want to show some appreciation for the homeowners and everybody else that's involved in this. We've got uh significant cross-section, feds, county, multiple communities homeowners and absolutely every single person that's been part of this project is leaning into it and figuring out how they can, you know, take some ownership for pieces in their space. Um, I'm grateful that we have not only knowledgeable homeowners, they, because of their knowledge, they understand the complex nature of this. And have been um incredibly patient and reasonable. And I think they want to continue to see progress and they're seeing that and Mike and his team are doing just an amazing job of not only managing the engineering elements, but the project management and maintaining communications with people. I feel uh very good about the direction that this is heading and the progress we're making. And we'll continue to keep those meetings moving not only to um make sure that all of the stakeholders know what each other has done, but keep the homeowners informed so they can also stay confident in the progress that's being made.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. And there's some people who are impacted quite a lot by this, but they're not saying, hey, pull the plug and send it out to Oregon and who cares what happens there. They're also care a lot about what happens down the line.
O- Oregon has stepped up. Each of the different governmental agencies that have been involved have stepped up. You know, it is definitely not, I don't see anybody at that table saying that they don't own some part of finding a solution, which is just really a- amazing. Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Not from Rural Affairs.
All right, how about EMS?
EMS meets Thursday.
All right, Bicycle Committee?
Yes, we met on January seventh, um, our first uh meeting of the year and we discussed a lot of stuff. One of the things is we want to change our uh meeting frequency. Uh, right now, we are meeting once a quarter, but I think this, we decided that is not enough, so we are trying to determine how much it's gonna cost to the city. Uh, if we are meeting like every two months, uh, most, uh, all of the members in the committee are waiving the estipend, so the only expenses is gonna be of, you know, the um, the cost for our staff, from the city staff. So we are gonna determine that. Also, we determine what are gonna be the committee priority for twenty-twenty. Uh, we set up a couple of priorities, uh, especially our role is gonna be policing, advising to the, to the council on infrastructure, monitor the infrastructure equitable access. They have in the north part of Fish Hatch Road. We are, we want also discuss if, um, we want to be a part of um, in the future, if there, there is new neighborhood um development. We want also to um, to be referred as a committee, so we can take a look at the, the bike path, so, you know, all of that infrastructure that sometime uh we are requiring some of this ne- new neighborhood to, to have. So, so we wanted to take a look at the design uh of those neighborhood plan, looking for the bike and, and bike path. What else? Uh, then we talk about, um, we had an upgrade um on the Public Works Road project for twenty-twenty. Uh, what are the bicycle-related events uh in future and how we can participate? Uh, what else? And also, uh, something that we are gonna create like a subcommittee and start working is how we can become, uh, you know, we, we are um, we receive our report card for the bicycle-friendly community. We are a silver community. We have our report card. Uh, I would recommend that you like biking and bike and how we can make our city better. Uh, in this uh area is, okay, so what is our, what do we need to do to, to become a goal uh community? So um, so we are gonna work in the area where our score was very low and determine how we can improve. So we are creating a subcommittee that I am part with us in that subcommittee. We are gonna try to meet monthly and determine how we are gonna create a, a work plan to achieve that in three years, you know? So, what else? Um, so it was um, and then that's it.
Good to hear that they want to get more involved and make more of an impact in the city, that's great.
Yeah, so, so we are working with Fi, uh, what is Bike Fish, Fish Board is our partners in this and Steve Arnold came to our meeting and so, um, so the idea is that how we can create, work together the two, you know, committees, so.
Great. All right, Tree Advisory?
We haven't met recently. We'll be meeting March twelfth at four o'clock.
All right, Landmark's Preservation, Jean?
Jean? Oh, no, nothing.
All right, uh, so, Committee Finance, Tom?
Finance, we'll move along. And next will be, we're paying bills. It's approval of bills. These are all checks, check numbers one, two, zero, zero, five, one through one, two, zero, one, five, five. These are dated twelve-one of last year to twelve-thirty-one last year. The total is one million, one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty, eighty-five cents. Questions? Otherwise, Tom keeps moving.
Keep going.
Next one would be review of all ACH payments. These are dated twelve-one last year through twelve-thirty-one last year. Total is five hundred and eighty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
Keep going.
Next one is review of the P cards. The transactions for a cycle ending November sixth, twenty nineteen. The total was three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Keep going. All right, uh, you got some resolutions now. You want to move those for approval?
I'll do the first one. It's just that I know you guys want to hear from other people, so.
You're doing such a great job, Tom.
The two people on both sides of me can read too, you know. The first one, we have a resolution. It's our two oh, uh, two oh nine dash nineteen, a resolution approving the purchase of the E poll books known as Badger Books. And it's good to, for the administrator to give us what he thinks about this.
So you're moving it?
I'm moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, do, maybe Tracy wants to speak to this.
Yeah, probably Tracy, but she's more knowledgeable. I thought they were those coupon books.
I knew there was some.
Not the Bucky book.
Tracy.
So this is a resolution that Ash actually authorizes the purchase of the electronic poll books to be used at the polling locations.
I think it, you know, really makes things a lot easier for those working the polls. Hopefully make the process go smoother and faster as well. And by approving it tonight, she can have it in time for the primaries. So it should be a good test run. So.
And this is through state contract too.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Tracy asks you to please approve. Dorothy?
Yeah, we can vote first. I, I wanted to know if there's any um concerns about people being crossed off the um polling books. And reminder to um regis, make, check your registration. I think it's going to be an important point to make.
Yeah, I don't, do you know anything Tracy about people who are?
Still in a state, yeah. State, so.
Jean?
Standing to if you are checked off for some reason, because they were going through a lot of that. If you bring like your ID and stuff, they can still register you there, so you can vote.
Not, not many people have uh proof of address and things like that on them routinely.
Well, I, I, that's just saying, like, if you, if you may think that, or you may, you know, if you check and you're not on there, that you can go and do that.
I suggest people go to the primary and try and vote. If it doesn't work, then you can have time to register and come back for, you think, a more important election.
Well, not, mm, no.
Or check the my vote.
We've only got one district that has a primary, or do we all?
The, all of them do because there's a, the judge.
Election.
Yep.
The, the, right, okay.
Dan?
I don't know, I, if I can ask, I, I'm kind of, Tracy, I, I just want to ask you this about the polling locations. Is, are we gonna review our polling locations? And I, I, I asked this because I had one constituent who contacted me. And is one, you know, is concerned that there's not a location on the west side of uh Verona Road, okay? And so I think we should try and do that when we look at new locations. And this is before you were clerk. I, I disagree with some of the poll, polling locations, but we gotta try and, and help the people on the other side there. We moved it further east to the new fire station for District One voting. I don't know, I, I'd like to see a new location.
Yeah, that's something that we're gonna look at along with redistricting, which I think will be effective in twenty-two. There's some you gotta have with the census information. There's, you know, a certain amount of time ahead of time you have to make changes and we, and all previous clerk and I think you as well didn't want to make a change like next year and then to change the next year after that, uh, just because it creates more confusion. You want to just kind of do it once. But I think that's a priority is to find something on that side of, of Verona Road as well.
And no big deal for the rest of them, except that I, I'd like to see the polling locations in the districts. I think every polling location is outside the district. So I think we, if we can think about that. I'm not saying you gotta do it. I know there's budget constraints, you know.
All that stuff.
I voted, I, I think I might have been the only one that voted against the polling locations last time they came. It was a voice vote and I said, no. And, and I'm still a no on the, these locations. And, and I think we definitely gotta look at, we gotta, these, the people on the other side of Verona Road, you know, if you're not able to drive, if you're, you're immobile, you know. I mean, we, we, it'd be nice to have something over there, so.
Julia?
So my understanding was that uh the Redeemer Church uh was a location where we temporarily put some, you know, to create like a polling station, because I agree with that. I receive a lot of, you know, emails and talk to people that live in that area that are very frustrated that, you know, and even if you look at the number who are, how many people vote, District One is the le, the district that vote the, the minimum. Because I think one of the impediment is that they had to, some people, they had to move now across the Verona Road. You know, and there is no transportation, there is no bus connecting the two points of the city. Um, and I have discussed this in my, like, two or three years ago with Patty and she was very, say, no, 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 no. But I think it's uh, we need to, I think we need to reconsider this and even for, for the November uh election, you know, as because now for April is too late. We want to do something temporary in the Redeemer Church, but I think we need to do something, even if it's temporary.
All right, we're, this, we're off track now and so it's, it's an important thing, yeah. We can get some information on one and all that, but, all right, so talking about Badger. about Badger Books and the approval for that, any other questions on, or concerns about that? Seeing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. All right. And who wants to do with the treatment of the water chemicals? Tom, you wanna do that one too? Janelle? Tom's pointing at you.
So, Resolution R. two, two, two dash one, nine, which is the annual purchase of water treatment chemicals.
Are you moving to approve?
Can I move to approve?
Yes, you can. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and?
So, basically what this is, is we purchase the water treatment chemicals that we need for the year in advance. And it's the authorization to do that. Did I hit the highlights, Pat?
You did.
There we go.
All right. Any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that approved. And one more? Janelle?
Uh, one more, Resolution. Pat, can I read this even if I'm recusing myself?
I wouldn't.
Okay. I'm gonna recuse myself from this particular one. Our organization does business with them and I don't have a conflict, but I think it's just conservative and safe. So, I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote.
All right, Tom, she's pointing the finger back at you.
I forgot, I forgot about that. No, she recused herself too on, in Finance. Resolution R. two, two, three dash nineteen. This is a resolution authorizing 2020 ESRI Enterprise License Agreement Payment and a move approval.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Something about Dorothy. And this is another annual thing that we do every year at this time. Anything you wanna add, Pat?
It's, it's our GIS software. So, all our mapping software you see on the internet, public can access it, staff access it, accesses it. So, it's, it's really vital to our operation in Public Works.
All right. Any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And any abstentions?
One abstention.
All right, one abstention. All right. Anything else in Finance at all? All right. I know you had a long agenda. Thank you for all your time. Personnel Committee?
We are meeting in February, but I don't remember the date because Sarah changed it. So, but it's the second week?
I believe it's February 20th.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I don't know. It was the second week, but now it's?
Eighteenth, February 18th.
All right.
Five thirty.
Okay. Public Safety?
I move to approve Resolution R. dash two, three, eight dash nineteen, Appointment of Humane Officers. Public, and we approve that in Public Safety.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And Public Safety approved. Do you wanna speak to it, Ann?
Just, we appoint officers from the Police Department who are basically animal humane officers.
Yeah, it's kinda animal control.
Right.
And we have to, like, officially appoint them.
Right. So, two people have been appointed from the Police Department.
Okay.
So, what are their?
Yeah, Dorothy?
So, these are not the guys that drive around in the animal control truck?
No, those are our public service employees. These, they're non sworn. You actually need per state statute to have two sworn, well, I don't know if it's two, but it, a, a, a certain number of sworn humane public safety officers. And this was pointed out by Valerie and the chief appointed two individuals.
Okay.
Any other questions at all? All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? That is approved. One more?
Yes. Also, I'll move to approve the operator license for Xavier Bowie. He came in and met with us tonight.
Is there a second? All right, and do you approve him?
We did approve him, our license.
All right. Any questions on his license at all? All right, all in favor of approving Xavier, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Pat, do you wanna do your administrative report now?
Sure. Just a few things to report, because I don't wanna overlap the mayor's report here. First of which is Thursday of this week is the South Madison Business Association. They do the, let me get the right terminology, the Business Expo. That's correct. And that'll be at the Colosseum starting at four thirty on Thursday. The other item is next Thursday, we will have the Chamber Annual Meeting. And that's going to be at Funk's located off Marketplace in Fitchburg. That'll be in their new event space there. I believe it used to be a gym or a beauty salon, maybe?
Beauty salon.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's next Thursday, I believe. That's from five to seven PM. So, that's all.
All right. Just a few things. There's obviously a lot happening in the city, a lot of growth, a lot of openings as well. Last week, Dwelling had their official grand opening. They've been open for a little while now. They moved over from, over on the west side of Madison to Dwelling's, they're, to, I'm sorry, to Fitchburg over in Orchard Point. And they've been really happy so far. Great family, a couple of families, a couple of sisters that own that. And I happen to teach their kids and know most of their kids and because their kids go to Oregon, but great families. So, that's exciting. And then today at noon, Goldfish had their grand opening. Tomorrow's actually their first day of business. And so, a swim school, they have a couple of classes already scheduled. And then they said that those are pretty much full right now. And so, they're looking to continue to expand that. They're right next to Dwelling's in Orchard Point. And then at four o'clock today, Blackhawk Church had their kind of official opening as well. They've been open for about a month now. And a great facility and, you know, people who are heavily involved in the community as well. And then I'll have a kind of a permanent space for their church and they can continue to do more things. And actually, it's also available for the community. They have some spaces there. If people in the community are looking for places to meet. So, a lot of things happening, a lot more to come, but a few great additions to the community. So, I will go to all the reports. I'll start with Janelle this time.
You know, I think obviously you talked about one thing that's happening in our backyard that just, if you haven't been down Seminole Highway recently, that whole road looks vastly different than it did a year ago with the construction of Sub-Zero, Pro-Megas making significant progress. Hop House is starting to look like, you know, there's a structure there. Race Day Events is coming along nicely. So, that whole corridor is just looking significantly different. You know, the one that kind of pops up would be the Neighborhood Watch Conversation. I know I sound like a broken record on this. We happen to have a Ring Doorbell. And so, one of the things that our Ring Doorbell does is provide data from other people that have a Ring Doorbell talking about things that have happened within about, in I, in my case, I think we're in about a three mile proximity. And my phone just blew up over Christmas. I mean, we start even as recently as the last week or so. There are very organized groups that are coming through the area and just checking cars, checking cars, checking cars. Is it open? Can I get a key? Can I get a remote? You know, our police, our police force has done an outstanding job of trying to get out and communicate with people about the Neighborhood Watch. And I would just say that if it's a concern in your neighborhood, reach out to the police, talk to them about, put something in place. The processes that you need to go through to make that happen are unbelievably simple. And yet, we need significant compliance in order to be effective, because otherwise, they're just gonna keep coming back. So, so I just, I would encourage everybody to do their small part to kind of address this.
All right, Tom?
I just have one topic. And if we could, Pat, maybe talk to building inspection or somebody. And we have this house that burnt and burned, Burnland up there, that the neighbors keep calling me. They just, like, they just wanna see some activity there, maybe something going on. We got the yellow tape up there. That was where the roof burnt off the top of the house of, we can maybe just, you know, do something with that one.
Yeah, I know. I, I've talked to our building inspector and fire department. We're still dealing with the insurance agency there. So, until insurance company signs off on it, the residents can't be touched. Maybe there's something we can do in terms of safety around the property line, if that's a concern. But in terms of it being blight, I, I know that's been an ongoing issue and we just need to let the process run its course.
Yeah. The prob- I, I hear you. I hear you. And I, I know where you're coming from. It's just tough on the neighbors when they have to go out every day and see the top of the home burnt off. And the yellow tape just being around in a mess. And, no, I hear you, but just keep it in mind.
I'll, I'll see if we can send somebody out to clean up the perimeter, if that's the issue. But I know we need to keep it secured.
Nothing.
All right, Sarah?
Oh.
Oh, all right.
I didn't know he was done yet.
That's right.
So, we had the Lieutenant Hardwick just was talking to the neighborhood about the, just reminding residents to be, to lock their doors, always have your garage door locked. And he also was saying too, if you leave your door, your car door unlocked, sometimes too, they'll, they may not steal your car, but they may take your garage door opener and then come back later. So, that's another thing to kind of remind residents to, you know, if you see things moved around in your car, always check to see if you still have your garage door opener. Second, Fahy, Fahy Fields continues to develop. I don't know if you wanna elaborate on any of that?
Sure, yeah. District three team, love it.
District three, yes. Just been walking past and the first parade home is actually being built. So, that's really going fast. And it's just kind of exciting that we'll have a parade home site this year within Fahy Fields, so.
And then we have the McGaw Park Woods Management continues. It stands number one and number five?
Yeah. And that's just removing some invasives within McGaw Park. And attending the East Fitchburg Neighborhood Association, kind of received some feedback that there was a resident who could see the sun, the horizon, that I've walked through there. And it looks really nice. They're doing a really great job. That I would encourage anybody to kinda check out the work that is being done in McGaw, that I think it looks, I think it looks really good.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
That's it.
All right. District three is done?
Yes.
All right. I like the team effort.
Yeah.
You weren't invited.
All right.
Beating.
Dan, report now?
Just a couple of very brief items. I also have heard about the situation with the turbine, the wind turbine in McKee Farms Park. Two of my constituents who are plan commissioners contacted me about it to, to fill me in. And so, obviously, it's an ongoing issue. And then the other issue you should know about is I had a resident in Remington Park, they, they, and I contacted Pat and the police chief today, Chad Brecklin, about the parking situation on both sides of Chapel Valley Road near the senior complex, Chapel Valley Senior Homes. The concern is they wanna make sure emergency vehicles are able to access the home and that the road's wide enough. It's a fairly wide road, but they're gonna look into if, if, if we might wanna restrict parking there.
Where, in Chapel Valley?
On Chapel Valley. So, Chapel Valley is on the south of PD where it goes to the, the senior.
Because I tried that every day and I didn't see any issue. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I, but she tried, yeah, okay.
Anything else, Dan?
No, no, that's it.
All right, Julia?
Yeah, I want to add that the inclusive playground committee, we are still meeting. And I'm gonna show you what we are trying to, I think that one is gonna be like a draft, the final draft. So, so we are still working. We meet once a month. It's a group of people from Communication Innovation, some people like Jake Johnson now is part of the team. He want to help. He was instrumental with the dog park. So, I was trying to be more proactive because, but I cannot do the fundraising because of my condition as an elder. So, I am not allowed to do that. So, I need to find a champion. And I think Jake is gonna be my champion. Okay. So, so we are meeting and it's good because this plan is still coming, okay? The other thing I want to mention is safety is a big issue in my district. And the 24 was a big day. It only happened close to my house. It happened to me too. You know, they went to one of my car. It was part, you know, so it was like, okay, it's happening. It's real. So, so, yeah, so, and I agree with Janelle when you mentioned that. We, even though we have a, our block, we have a, we are a very close neighbors that we try to watch our, you know, if we have a garage door open, we text and all of that. But it happened the 24, two or three o'clock in the morning. And so, yeah, so it was, I talked to Chad Brecklin, the chief, and, you know, my kid left the car open, so, you know, so. But, you know, but it was, you know, it was scary because you know where my garage door is and where I live is, is the way, it was.
Is it stolen?
No, no. Because I think they were looking for the, the garage door and it wasn't in the car. But it was like, scary, you know, so. Yeah, so.
Great.
We're still working in inclusive playground.
Good.
It's, it's, it's gonna take time, but we are gonna build it.
No, I think this is gonna be a great addition.
Yeah.
Get that done. Good. All right, Ann. All right, Dorothy?
Yeah, I've got a couple of interesting little tidbits. I was at the Blackhawk thing today and I was really happy to see. And I talked to some of them. If people have a chance to go in there, notice the little field stone pieces that they have in there. Before the plan developed, I asked them to find a way to incorporate the stones from the old barn into the new church. And that is what they did. And that is what those stone pillars are, is stones from the legacy farm that had been there before the church. So, that was really cool. I also asked how many kids they have there every Sunday. They said 175 kids every Sunday. So, however many parents that equals. So, they're really got a lot of activity going with the turbine. And I'm, I'm not remembering the name of the online scavenger hunt thing.
Pokemon Go?
No. Hmm?
Go, Pokemon Go?
No, a different one. Anyway, the yellow, if those yellow posts are going to be affected, know that there is a clue as part of one of the yellow posts. And we should.
Like a geocaching thing?
Geocache, that's it, exactly. Uh-huh.
Well, you can get like the geo coordinates and people kind of trying to find the hidden boxes and.
What's it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, it, one, one of the yellow posts is related to a geocache site. So, that owner should probably be notified if those posts are gonna get pulled.
Okay. All right. All right. I'm finished with this comprehensive plan. So, the big thing is just the draft comprehensive plan is on the website. Next week is a big week. And Tuesday is Plan Commission. We're gonna go through that and make a recommendation. And then it can be the whole next week. Wednesday, we're gonna go through that entire plan as well as a, a body to have any discussion. Sonya's gonna go through all the changes. She can do something similar, Plan Commission. But it's, you know, really wanna go through it with all of us, make sure that everyone gets a chance to provide, you know, more feedback on that. And so, it's a big week for the comp plan. But it is on the website already. I encourage you to go look at that, look through that and see where it's at right now. But a lot of great work by planning and zoning to get us to this point. And so, next week is gonna be a big week for feedback. Yeah, so, Julia?
Yeah, my question is, you know, I, you know, I asked you about that this body should have like a meeting and discuss, because I, I went through and all of that are my questions that I want to discuss with the whole council. So, my concern was that this, the Plan Commission is gonna review the draft before the council, this body had the opportunity to go through that with a formal presentation from the Planning Department. I know that we are gonna have the discussion the 22nd. But my question is, so, if we have ques- we have-
so if we have, we have thing that we want to add, can we do it tonight? Or when is going to be our opportunity to add or to modify some of the language this year?
Yeah, we'll still be able to make changes to some of the language type stuff until we approve it. Really, like anything else, there's still that opportunity to provide changes, especially because we're going to have thirty days for feedback from community. And so people in the community might, might get a lot of feedback, hey, I really don't like this piece. I don't know what that might be, but we can take that out if we get that feedback. That's really kind of that third day comment period, the point for, the purpose of that is so that we can still make changes to that. Now, I think the one piece, the map would be the one thing that if there are changes to that. Now, we only made four changes and I think you know about all of those. It's the Edgewood, it's Oregon School District, it's Promega. And then also that kind of charter school thing up by Index Road. Those are the four changes we've made to that map. And I believe that everyone is on board. I don't want to speak for anyone, but I know that there's been, well, for some of those more support than others, but we talked about a lot, I should say. But that piece, if for some reason we don't agree with those changes and Plan Commission approves that, that's where there could be some issues or go back to plan. But the, the policy portion of that, we can make changes to those pieces. Even if Plan Commission recommends one thing, we do have the ability to make some changes.
We see that, when we did that was that we would like to include the South Stoner Prairie neighborhood in the comprehensive plan. And I don't know, I haven't, you know, you know, to add that for start review, you know, for, because we determined that we need more industrial land. And that one is going to be, you know, the next neighborhood plan that we can work on that. But my question is, if we can include that to be, you know, one of the, to start working in 2020 in the neighborhood plan for the South Stoner, you know what I mean?
That's my recommendation for staff is that that South Stoner Prairie.
But that one is going to be.
Start that planning process.
But we had to put it in the plan?
No, it's already in there. It's in there as a.
Yeah, it's there, but if we want to say, we want, you know, we want the staff to start working.
No, that would be part of the comp plan.
No?
But that is something that I agree with and actually we'll direct staff to do it in 2020, yeah.
It had to come through an amendment to the comprehensive plan or we can go directly, okay?
No, because it's already in there. We just start that planning process for South Stoner Prairie.
But the other, the other thing that I would like for us to discuss was in the land use. You know, the different category, I think it was when I was in Plan Commission was something that it was mentioned at one time that maybe we need to determine, you know, if we need to, you know, make any changes to this land use. I know that we, because of the short period of time that we have, it's not going to be enough time. But this is something that, you know, it's something that I, I was hoping that we look at those too, you know what I mean? And I have more stuff here, you know what I mean, so.
We'll go through all those things.
But if I want to be sure that we have, we see something that we want to incorporate, we, you know, we can do it, you know, because it's going to Plan Commission and then it's a draft and then they.
They make a recommendation and, yeah, we'll still be able to change, especially the policy portions of that, yep. Other questions at all? Otherwise, next committee, the whole, committee hold is next Wednesday and two weeks from tonight is next common council meeting. So otherwise, if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn, we can do that.
I'll second.
All right, same by Janelle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? We are adjourned.